The time is 5:00 o'clock and a call to order, the committee of the whole for April 21st, 2025. Clerk Swope, could you read the roll?
Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Pally Van Ooglu.
President.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Eight members present.
Okay, next we have the minutes. Vice President Carter.
Yes, I make a motion to approve the April 7th meetings as presented, minutes as presented.
Okay, we have proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes. Next, we are on to public comment on agenda items. If anyone is here from the public and would like to speak on one of the agenda items, you can come down to the podium at this time. You'll have up to three minutes. Can you share your name for the record? I don't see anyone from the public, and we've got nobody online, so we are going to move on. I do not see our discussion action B item here yet, so we are going to move down to C, the appointment of Malik Brown, the member of the Lansing Public Media Authority, term to expire June 30th, 2025. Malik, if you could come on down here to the well.
To the well?
Yes.
Is it that?
That right there, it'd be great. And make sure the green light is on, and if you just wanted to go ahead and share a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on this committee.
A little bit about myself. Well, I'm 56. Where should I start? Oh, it's on.
It's on. Oh, it's on. Sorry. It was glowing. Let's say not at the very beginning. In the, I don't remember when. In the 90s, I started public access on Miller Road with Comcast. I felt a need to promote positive things and unique things that I wouldn't normally see on the news, and so that's where my public access cable history began in producing things. It was a fantastic opportunity to learn a three-camera setup like you would see on every TV show that you see today. It was a great opportunity that lasted 13.5 years, which means every week, 48 weeks out of the year, I had a live call-in talk show. That closed, which ended that chapter, when the Lansing Public Media Center was created, Dom Cochrane asked for me to be beta, basically check out the facilities, which I thought was fantastic because you do live streaming. As technology has changed, you could do live streaming as well as regular production. It was the beginning of things called podcasts and stuff, and so I was very honored to be about that, which probably to, right now, I'm in a meeting. Sorry. I'm right here. I'm in. Probably to Dom's chagrin, I did a lot of complaining because things weren't working as smoothly as I would want them to be or expect them to be, but that's kind of why he asked me to be there, to fix the glitches before more people started using that. So I did that for two and a half years. In that time, people had asked me to, if I had considered being on the board, then I didn't really know much about it then, but all these years later, between promoting things about Lansing, opening a store to promote Lansing, purposely living in Lansing, even by accident through breakups and otherwise, I make it a point to have a Lansing address. I made it a point and thankful to those two loud people in the back, their mother. Our kids are enrolled in Lansing School District. That's very purposeful. Being connected to the Lansing Promise, that's very purposeful. I knew about the Lansing Public Promise before it was public, talking to Kelly Dean about it, and I inserted myself to be involved in the Lansing Promise and talking about it in a positive light so people can buy into it. And so those are the kind of things that I would promote on the show that I did. I'm kind of rambling. I could use more direction. Tell me about myself. I mean, I think that's a lot of, a lot of what I do, I even, you know, I wear the logo. I got Lansing, and if I would have had my not-so-fancy jacket, you would have seen the logo on my back of how much I appreciate Lansing. And I've spoken before about the ovation itself. I started, I started as what would be considered old in Hollywood, and I went out to LA to try to be an actor and basically was told at 20-something years of age that I'm starting about 10 years too late. So coming back to little LA, Lansing area, we have a lot of what makes learning, creating, developing, and being a great artist. And I feel like with a connection between what's great, what's happening at Graywall Hall, I went down here on Tuesday night, and I couldn't find a parking space, and I think that's awesome. For some country singer that I had no idea who they were, and when I looked it up, they'd only been doing music for a couple of years, and I'm like, oh, this is great. So this person is on the, we are on the way up. These are artists that are on the way up, filling our parking spaces in downtown Lansing. So the importance of having a connection with what's happening at Graywall, to the ovation, and the creative development that we have an opportunity to do. So these young folks back here, the dude on the left likes making music, and the dude on the right likes dancing to that music, so much so that we're involved with All of the Above Hip-Hop Academy. So hopefully I've dropped enough names and dropped enough organizations to talk about my connection to the city. Malik, I appreciate it. You're absolutely one of the well-connected individuals in this community, and you do so much for Lansing, and we absolutely appreciate it. Does anyone have any questions? I don't think so. Okay, well, again, we all appreciate everything you do in this community and that you love Lansing, so with that, I would entertain a motion.
Yes, I will make a motion for the appointment, approval of the resolution appointment for Michael Malik Brown, member of the Lansing Public Media Authority, term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Okay, we have proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Wait, that expires June 30th, 2025?
2026. Should be 2026, right? Or is it 2025? It's 25? Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so, and then you'll, yeah, we'll reappoint at that time, just when the term ends. So with that, with that, all those in favor say aye. Oppose? Passes. All right. Sir, you can stay until 7:00, and we'll do a special ceremony at the beginning of council, or you can leave because we do have budget hearings tonight that could run over. I know you got your little ones with you. Can I come back at 7:00? Yes. Okay. Yeah, absolutely. I'll go feed my kids at Olympic Broil in Lansing. Thank you. All right. So Item B, the appointment of Linda Sanchez, Citizen Retiree Member for the Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. I do not see her here. Do we want to pass on this one? Yeah, let's push this off to May 5th. So then we'll move on to Item 5, which is presentations. Item D. Mark?
Sir, just real quick, is the board clear on the expiration, why it's a three-month appointment for Ms. Brown?
Yeah, for the, because that's the end of the cycle for that C, yeah.
Correct. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Mark. So first up, we're going to have the city clerk come on down for his department budget presentation. Chris, you know the routine, sir.
I've done this once, your client.
That's what I heard.
All right. Thanks for the opportunity, and I will set in with the questions that you all asked. So the difference between our current budget and the proposed budget, the election costs are lower because it's a city election year, and the costs are much lower. Savings include election inspector pay, overtime, temporary help, miscellaneous operating, among other things. And also, the rent for the Rio Elections Office is eliminated partway through the year as we will be in our new Lansing Elections Office on Jolly Road. Changes in services, assuming that the Charter Commission meets their proposed timeline to put a charter on the November 2025 ballot, and the proposal passes, related responsibilities to that will end. And then I also want to note that we have seen an increase for demand in passports, so we have been doing special passport evenings. In fact, when I walked up from the ninth floor, there were about 30 people in the hallway working on getting passports this very evening. There are no programs that we have done in the past that are not included in this budget, and there are no expenses so far with our new location that were not expected initially. Fee increases, yes. So what we do with the license fees is we have a formula so that we kind of raise them gradually, and we kind of apply sort of a inflationary factor, and when that hits kind of a round number like $25, we just raise those so that we don't end up in the future needing to raise them by a lot. So the ones that are up for increase this year are auctioneer cabaret, show license, waist taller. Major equipment purchases, we do not have any this year, but the election equipment that we got in 2017, which was mostly funded by Help America Vote Act federal funds, the life expectancy is 10 years, so the state is already working on an RFP process, and once that happens, we will have to get all new equipment. So likely in 2017, or 2027, we will likely have 750,000 to $1 million anticipated cost for that. You know, I've worked with fellow clerks to try and have the state pick up a significant portion of that, but at this point, there is no indication that it is, will be anyone's responsibility other than our own. We also, every year, we budget to replace a fraction of the laptops that we use in the precinct, so we do have a capital expense in there for that. 3-1-1 impacts on our department. So we have a reduced number of phone calls. We used to get a number of phone calls every day that were related, not even related to the city of Lansing. People in, everywhere in the state, they come up with a problem dealing with state government, and somebody tells them, call Lansing. So they call information, and they say Lansing, and then they end up, a lot of times, with the Lansing City Clerk's office. So it's reduced a lot of those extraneous calls. And then we have given 3-1-1 some access to publicly available and trained them on how to get access to voter information so they could assist some voters that, things that voters could look up on their own, but 3-1-1 can assist them on the phone if they're not able to do that. And that took a lot of pressure off of our staff. They responded to over 4,000 calls from our office, is our understanding, which we would have probably had to have two additional part-time staff people during this last presidential election. So our temp staffing is reduced for the next budget year because of them and because of the smaller turnout elections. Question about eliminated or combining contracting positions. We do contract for temporary help in our office related to elections, and that's simply because even, you know, no matter what you do with that crunch of the 30 days before an election, there's just too much for my team to do. So we traditionally, we have always done that. And no one has left my office in the last year, so no one was due to retirement. Operational changes to become more efficient, we are working on implementing new software for license processing and our licensing database to result in best, better customer service and being able to know exactly where and what's going on with licenses. We don't anticipate necessarily any actual savings, though. Are we able to perform all the necessary responsibilities with this budget? Yes, we are. And we have no new initiatives or services in this budget. We have not budgeted for any federal funds to be received in this budget. We have gotten them in the past, but we do not have any in this upcoming budget. And BSNA, there was a learning curve from us in terms of entry, and I think the whole city. We did have one issue with an employee that separates their time between our office and the Charter Commission budget, and that related to a check shortage that got fixed right away and got addressed the next paycheck. But it's smoothed out now, so everything's going fine. And those were all the questions you had sent ahead. I'm glad to answer any others if you have any.
Do we have any questions for the clerk? Internal auditor?
Hi, Chris. I was wondering, so on your budget, there's contractual services of $57,000. I was wondering, what was that about?
The, the 7,000.
I might be able to jog your memory slightly. That was in.
Oh, 57,000. Contractual, sorry. I thought you said 7,000. Okay. So the election equipment that we do have, we're required to pay a maintenance and service fee to a vendor, and they come through, and anytime there's an update to the software, they, they perform that update, and if there's a problem with a piece of equipment, they fix it. So we're required through the state contract, when we got the equipment in 2017, it had five years was included, and then the second five years, we have to pay the maintenance fee.
Is this an annual amount, the 57,000?
Yes. Yes. All right. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Councilwoman Pally Van Ooglu.
Thank you, President Cost. Good evening, Clerk Swope. I just have one brief question. The line item on parking subsidy, it looks like it jumped from 6,000 to 13,500, and I'm just curious about that number.
I've always been curious about that number, too. I did get a list about a month ago from Parking Services confirming who worked with us, and they had people who had been gone for quite some time, so I corrected their list. So where we end up, I don't know, but that's, that's the first, it's a fortunate change that they are confirming that list because I have a feeling that's been going on for a while.
Chris, or Chris, Clerk Swope, how many people do you have parking downtown?
We have two interns and three full-time.
Seems awful steep for parking for one year for five people. Jake, do you possibly have an explanation why it would be so high or have gone up?
Yeah, this is an issue that was brought up as we were developing the budget allocations, and so I derived my numbers on some early numbers for the beginning of the fiscal year. Got a list from Parking. Heard about this issue. Parking is currently scrubbing through their list to get the accurate count of who belongs in each department, but I figured as far as looking at this year's budget, we could use the figures which were an overestimate and be safe within individual departments. So I anticipate some slight operational savings, but as far as like the citywide budget as a whole, a comparatively small amount.
So we could possibly see all of the parking that is charged for each department to go into a reduction next year because of overpayment this year?
Yes, or at least overbudgeting, if not overpayment. We're going to review those charges for this year as we budgeted them and as we moved the costs around. This is one of the improvements of where in previous years, we were charging all of these employees directly to the HR department line item. As we charge them out to all of the individual departments directly, they have a direct line of sight as to who's being charged to, for their department, and can give a much faster response as to, hey, this person doesn't belong in our account.
Okay, all right. Is there any further questions for the clerk? Councilman Jackson?
Just to close on that whole parking topic, it almost sounds like throughout the years, there's been parking passes provided to interns, employees, whoever they may be, to use the parking lots, and then at some point, they stopped working, but their passes still worked for all these times, so they may or may not have continued to use their passes when they're not with the city. So I don't know if that, anybody cares to investigate. I don't think that we need to, but that's probably why some of the numbers could be off or higher. Is that what the administration feels as well, or?
I think it's one of those areas that we're looking into to make sure that we're doing it correctly, and that before we shut off any particular accounts, double-checking that names weren't just handed off where they took one parking pass, gave it to the next employee that took their place, and that we're not shutting off the passes of active employees as we go through this list. And so that's one thing that we do want to keep track of, that we're not handing out free parking, but we're going through, and parking is taking a fresh look at that list with departments.
Okay, do we have any further questions for the clerk? Okay, seeing none, we want to thank you for coming down here.
Thank you.
Before we bring down the mayor's, oh, you're already here. I believe that Ms. Sanchez did arrive, so we're going to bring her down at this time and move back to Item B. Good evening. If you want to make sure your green light's on, and then the presentation is yours, if you could just briefly tell us about yourself and why you want to serve on the retirement board.
Well, hello. I am Linda Sanchez-Gazella. I think I know most of you except for Vice President Carter. It's nice to meet you. I have applied to be on the retirement board. I have a vested interest. The vacancy right now is for a retiree of the city of Lansing, which I am. I know, I am familiar with the board, as I sat on it as the HR Director previously before I retired. What else can I say? I was born and raised in the city of Lansing, have served. When I retired, I let Mayor Shore know that if I could serve the city of Lansing in any capacity, that I'd be happy to do that. And when I saw the opening, I said, okay, this is maybe someplace that I could fit in.
Excellent. Do we have any questions? And I apologize, Ms. Gazella, I'm so used to just saying Sanchez.
Well, everybody does. My husband introduces himself as Mike Sanchez, too.
Do we have any further questions? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not so much a question, just a congratulations on your retirement and your continued service. I know from when I was a young kid, you were still in the city helping with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board in your position, so it just makes sense. It seems like that your volunteerism and your support for Lansing continues in a similar, you know, retired, and now you can be on the retirement board, and it has to be a retired person. So it just all seems to fit, and I know you'll do a great job, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson.
Do we have any further comment? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Yes, I will make a motion for the appointment of Linda Sanchez-Gazella, to the Citizen Retiree Member of the Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Okay, we have proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. We will have a special ceremony tonight at 7:00. We can swear you in then, or if you have to leave, it's your choice. You'll be able to go to the clerk's office tomorrow and be able to get sworn in.
Okay, I will, I do have to leave.
Okay.
So I will come back and get sworn in, and we'll go from there.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. It was good seeing all of you.
Take care. All right. Next, we're going to move back into the department budget presentations in the mayor's office. I believe Mark is here for that presentation. Just get a wild guess.
Not that wild. Come on. Start with, start with your questions. First one is, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to proposed? The mayor's office retains deficiencies from previous years with increases to personnel matching the cost of living adjustment that city employees received with increases to fringe benefit costs, accounting for the remaining adjustments. Increases to other costs are largely rates set by other departments or reflect the status quo increase in costs due to inflation. The next one is, are there programs you've done in the past that you have not included in this budget? The answer to that question is no. Are there any rate or fee increases, and if so, why? No. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed? There are not. What impact has 3-1-1 taken on your department and staff? Very similar to the clerk's answer, 3-1-1 has reduced the number of calls unrelated to the mayor's office. We get the exact same call Lansing that you hear from folks. And much like, you know, your, your office, we are a major point of entry for residents who have questions or concerns or want to report a problem. So we still get a significant number of calls, including, so these requests, appointments, proclamations, community faith-based events, collaborating with our local community-based organizations, our union groups, business community, labor, and other proactive initiatives throughout the city. Our office is very, very busy on a day-to-day, providing customer service, communication, kind of general executive administration. 3-1 answers calls, do you intend to eliminate staffing because of lower workload? The answer to that is no. Are there any eliminated combining or contracting positions in your budget, and if so, provide specifics? The answer to that one is no. How many employees have left the department in the past year, and how many were due to retirement? We've had three leave. None were due to retirement. What, if any, operational changes have we made to become more efficient? 3-1-1 certainly has made our office more efficient, as callers are able to get questions answered even faster than they were. Regularly, our office would have to inquire with a different department to get a resident's answer. If, you know, somebody had a question about a sidewalk, or a pothole, or a code issue, we would have to go to those departments, inquire with them, get an answer back to the resident. 3-1-1 can do a lot of that without having the lag time. We took a couple of years ago that we've sustained and do not propose restoring that reduction at this time. Are you able to perform all necessary department responsibilities with this budget? Yes, we are. New initiatives or services will be providing? None. Top two largest vendors for our department. Mayor's office has no recurring contractual services. Primary costs include things like office supplies, copier costs, promotional items, travel mileage, et cetera. We did not budget it for the receipt of federal grants. And the last one regarding BSNA, it's funny that the clerk chose the words he did about a learning curve, because that's exactly what I wrote down. There certainly has been a learning curve with the new system. We're navigating it. We're navigating it. We have great support through BSNA and IT when we need it. They've been very responsive. They've resolved what issues we've had, and we'll continue to move forward, so.
Kate, do we have any questions? Internal auditor.
Thank you, President Cost. Just not really a question, but more or less, again, making you aware that I'm going to be watching the project management of the construction projects, the City Hall, ovation, and public service in the district court. So I don't want to talk, already talked to the mayor, but you weren't there, Mark, and just wanted to let you know.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Councilman Jackson?
It's not too big of a deal. I'm just curious why you're giving it when you're not the head of the mayor's office.
As the mayor's office chief has said, I am, and I'm here most of the time, all the time anyway. So it just seemed like a natural fit that I am. We certainly yet have, have a mayor, deputy mayor, but I'm the mayor's office chief of staff, so I drew the, drew the straw to give a presentation.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, President Cost. Good evening, Mark. Just curious about the, the change from $2,839 to $20,000 for my brother's keeper from fiscal 2024 to 2025. And I thought we were supposed to be receiving like quarterly reports from them, and I don't remember seeing, seeing, seeing any in quite some time.
I don't have it on my form. You're talking about, repeat the numbers that you mentioned? So the, are you talking about the 2024 actuals versus the current year budget?
Correct.
So that, the actuals are the actual amount of dollars that went out that year. We budget 20,000 has been the historically, historical amount set aside. There is no specific organization that this is dedicated to, but projects come up on a case-by-case basis. That's one where a number of years ago, we took a look, a look at the process by which these contracts were going out, and we implemented a significantly stricter set of internal controls that went through a long process of vetting by the city attorney's office. I think it might have been looked at by the internal auditor at, at some time. And so I think 2024 might have been a year where we were looking at that process in a lot of detail, and not as many dollars went out as might have gone out in previous years. And so 20,000 is the amount that's was adopted in the current year budget. We're opposing no change as far to, as far as the city-supported agencies go.
Okay, and are they still in association? I just haven't heard much about them, and I thought we were supposed to get like quarterly reports from your office.
If, if we were, I'd have to go back and look at the budget policies to see if that wasn't one of them in there. Happy to provide an update. I know we have, like Jake said, kind of revamped the application process to actually mirror more like the community funding application that you all put out. Your, your reporting requests mirror what we are looking for with that program. So it made a lot of sense to kind of not reinvent the wheel and use what's working already. So we've kind of adopted your process for, for community funding.
Okay, no further questions.
Kate, maybe any other questions? Okay, just quickly, how many staff members do you currently have?
Oh, I have to do a little counting. Just more in the neighborhood of eight to 10.
And this more, is, is probably less a you question, more of a Jake question. So the parking is $11,000 for the mayor's office, and they've got eight to 10 employees, I assume, that work here in City Hall. And the clerk's $13,000 for five employees that are here with two part-times. So can you try to make that math under, I don't understand that math.
I know there's certain differences in the, the parking under City Hall, for one, is allocated differently. It's not part of the necessarily parking ramp. And so like the mayor and certain staff are underneath this building. As we move into a new City Hall, I believe, we will all be going into, back to a parking ramp. And so for next year's budget, our costs will probably go up in that area where we'll be, there won't be associated parking, to my knowledge, in that building exactly. But, and then I think the matter that the clerk was describing with other employees, we'll take a look at that list and get a very accurate count.
How, how many spots do you have here underneath City Hall? The mayor?
We, I think there's a list we could potentially provide.
I'm, I'm trying to get some clarity on, clarity on these numbers. So Jake, if it's possible, I guess the question would be, can you bring us back? What is the cost per employee? I mean, I see $11,000, eight to 10 employees, you know, some may park here, some may park down the road, we don't know. The clerk's number's higher. Just if we could get a breakdown of what it's costing per employee, I think that would make more sense than what we're looking at here.
Can do. I think off the top of my head, it's approximately 125 per month per employee. But it depends on which parking ramp they belong to. But I can get those numbers by ramp and estimate those estimates.
Because it sounds like there's about five that park here for the mayor's office in this building.
So.
And I would, I would guess that this is more expensive. Do you know if the parking includes the mayor's spot as well? Do electeds get included in this cost for parking?
I can double check who's included.
Because then that would bring up a question of our parking and how much we pay when we have, I think, three people that park there, if electeds aren't being charged to park. So if you could just, you know, get some clarity on those questions and get back to us, I would appreciate it.
Exactly, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on then to the LEDC. I believe we have Carl Dorshimer here and Chris Klein. If you want to make sure the green light is on, and then whenever you are ready, the floor is yours.
I'm Carl Dorshimer, president of the Lansing EDC, and with me I have Chris Klein, Vice President. And we're here to present our budget, answer your questions, and both the written questions and any questions you may have here tonight. I'll turn it over to Chris, and he can run through the answers to the written questions. So, Chris?
All right, good evening. Thank you, counsel. Going through the questions, the first, what is the difference with your budget from the current fiscal year to the proposed budget? The primary differences between the current fiscal year and the proposed FY26 budget include, in the current year, we had three positions that were vacant, vacant for a portion of the year prior to be being filled. So the proposed FY26 shows these three FTEs filled through the entirety of the year. That includes with FY26, any budget associated with the payroll, benefits, operations, all to reflect the current staffing level. Overall, operational expenditures remain largely consistent from FY25 to 26. Of the 9.5% proposed increase to operational expenses, about 8% is under payroll, and then payroll and benefits, and then 1.5% under the other operations. Under program expenditures, the Strategic Site Readiness Program, the SSRP grant that was received from Michigan Economic Development Corporation, this is for the former GM Plant Six site, that was in the amount of almost 19 million, that was accounted for in FY25. These grant activities will continue for several years, but they, it's not reflected in the future budget. Additionally, with the Facade Improvement Program, that was increased from 175,000 in the current fiscal year to 250,000 in the proposed FY26 budget. The next question, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for? And if so, why? No, no changes, changes. The Lansing EDC will continue to provide City of Lansing with economic development services per an annual contract with the city funded under the FY26 budget. The scope of work under that contract includes management administration of the Lansing EDC, the Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the Lansing Tax and Financing Authority, and four corridor improvement authorities. Also administering the City of Lansing Facade Improvement Program, real estate and place development services, business retention, expansion, and traction services, as well as the Lansing Equitable Economic Development Initiative, the LEED Initiative, and that includes small business technical assistance, grants, a developer program, as well as targeted redevelopment assistance as well. And then, as mentioned, we're also administering the Strategic Site Readiness Program on former GM Plant Six. Next question, are there programs you have done in the past that you have not included in this budget? No. And then next, after that, what if any operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department? What were the savings? So the reorganization of the Lansing EDC has allowed us to directly assess operations. And so we've gone through a rebranding effort, going through a strategic planning process, and this is really helping us focus our organizational vision and services. We also continue to build staff capacity and create defined staff roles for management of the various services that we offer. Professional development of staff is also extremely important to us and we increase, increases individual and organizational capabilities through these efforts. The Lansing EDC has become more efficient and effective in the work that we do and an incredible value to the city. We also assess contractual services regularly and have reduced or eliminated those that are unnecessary or can be handled internally by staff. Some of these include technology services and accounting processes that could be done internally. Next question, are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Yes, the current pipeline of development projects and programs and small business growth is very active. We continue to direct available staff capacity to best serve the City of Lansing. Are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing with this budget? In the current fiscal year, we began a more robust business retention and expansion effort throughout the city to engage with business and offer assistance with businesses and offer assistance. We anticipate this effort to intensify in this coming fiscal year. We also partner with organizations to enhance offerings at lower no cost to the city. An example is our partnership with PNC Bank to provide small business workshops, and the series has topics such as developing a business plan. We are also implementing the Southwest Thrive Program, which is funded under the city's Thriving Communities Program grant. And this provides technical assistance and capacity building, support to small businesses in South Lansing. These programs will continue into FY26, along with the launch of the Lansing EDC LEED Initiative. We have a Supporting and Power to Emerging Developers, SEED, so LEED/SEED program. That will be happening this coming fiscal year, as well as our Targeted Redevelopment Program through the LEED Initiative. The SEED program will offer emerging developers, BIPOC developers, access to technical training, and relationship-building opportunities to help them successfully navigate the development process. The Targeted Redevelopment Program aims to make catalytic investments in real estate projects that bring new energy and economic activity to critical areas of the city. Next question, have you budgeted for receipt of federal grant funds? If they get pulled back, will you still be able to continue to service those funds that would be used for or purchase the item that was intended to be purchased with those funds and then cover the staff as well? So the FY26 budget does not include the receipt of any new federal grant funds. We are awaiting the outcome of a, of an award. A grant proposal we submitted, $500,000 to the U.S. EPA, and this was to support environmental assessment assistance. We are anticipating an update on this in May, and if so awarded, we have to update the budget. Is this going a bit later this year? It was the same situation with the last presidential administration changeover, just some of those things are delayed. The Lansing EDC also manages programs funded with federal dollars, including an EPA revolving loan fund and some ARPA dollars that were provided by the city. These funds are currently in hand, and as far as we are aware, not a threat to be pulled back at this time. In the event that these funds are, would be pulled back, the programs would likely cease to exist, but we would, the staffing would not be impacted, and we'd move that available capacity, redirect that to similar initiatives to the greatest extent possible. Does this budget have the FTE to focus on small business, minority business, and female-owned businesses? If not, why? So the council's recommendation to fund an FTE in this role is not included in FY26 budget. I believe it's $80,000 to have those focuses. However, we see, we oversee several programs to assist small businesses. That includes, as mentioned, the LEED Initiative, and that has programming exclusively focusing on BIPOC-owned businesses. Lansing EDC also manages a facade improvement program, the microloan program, which is funded from EDC dollars, and other small business assistance. So you've probably seen our team up here discuss development liquor licenses, other incentives and guidance is also provided to small businesses. We are making these resources more known and accessible to small businesses by enhancing outreach and engagement efforts and providing additional technical assistance and program guidance. A significant part of this was the addition of a staff member focused on marketing and communications. These internal efforts have helped our team assist more small businesses than ever, and a large proportion of those small businesses are currently, we are currently assisting with. The available programs are minority or women-owned businesses. And that concludes the questions that were provided to us in advance.
Okay, do we have any questions? Internal auditor.
Thank you, President Cost. I couldn't quite hear you very well. The FTE on the last question, did you say it's not included or it is included in the budget?
It is not included in the proposed budget, the additional funding for an FTE.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, do we have any additional questions? Councilman Jackson?
Just a question. Thank you for all the work and all that good stuff, a lot of stuff's happening, especially if you look at the packet, which is really nicely put together and highlights a lot. I just did notice that under development projects, it has a new vision Lansing. And just knowing how that came to be, I just wonder what does LEDC take responsibility about that? Or like, how did you guys work that to where it's something that's highlighted on here?
As far as in our annual report? Do you want to answer that question?
Sure, yeah.
The EDC is also the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and the largest component of incentives used to facilitate that development is the transformational brownfield plant. So we worked for over a year with the developer to put together the performance for the five different projects to justify that they did need the brownfield incentives, which essentially is a tax refund. And our brownfield authority, we worked with them, and then we worked with MEDC on that, and then had to shepherd that plan through our brownfield board and plus council. So we spent hundreds of hours on that project. So therefore, we put it in our report because it's, it's one of our projects, essentially.
Makes sense. I can see that, especially with that explanation. Thanks. And on that same page, when it talks about the Fisher Body Plant, strategic preparedness or readiness, are you saying that it is going to get like brownfield out ahead of time before people come? Or is it, what is, what is that for that piece of progress?
It's a multi-year process. Right now, we're just in the beginning of the process. But the first, the initial part is to assess the site and determine what contamination is there and how to essentially remediate that and prepare the site for development, regardless of what goes there. Right now, it just, it can't host any type of development because it's just prohibitive in terms of the environmental cost. And then the second phase of that is we work with the developer, the neighborhood, our board, and others, and identify the types of uses that could go there and the ones that, if they went there, they were beneficial to the community in terms of generating jobs, taxes. West Side Neighborhood, we've had conversations with them. West Side Neighborhood, we've had conversations with them. It's a process to determine then what would be the best fit for that site, and then given what that fit is, basically seek those type of developments, and ultimately then the site would have to be prepared specifically for that development. And so, there'd be additional activities involved because it's such a contaminated site, and there's a lot of site prep and dirt work and utilities and a long list of items. So, that's the second phase, and then ultimately, the developer would be constructing the buildings. That's the third phase. That takes about two to three years to go through that.
And just to be clear, so with the money that's awarded, is it safe to say that something's going to happen there?
It's site readiness funding, so it's to prepare the site and make it ready for development and support development that occurs there. But we're using it also as an incentive to get the kind of development on that site that we feel is best, most beneficial for the City of Lansing and the Lansing residents.
Okay. And just so everybody's aware, the old Fisher Body Plant is off of Verlinden and Michigan Avenue, across from Sexton, across from Harries. It's now flat and pretty much pavement and some tracks, and I'm sure a lot of brownfield-eligible things underneath there.
Correct.
And a lot of people want to know what's going to happen with it, of course.
And we're going to put up a website to give constant feedback, answer questions, meet periodically with stakeholder group, and keep them involved all along. And we just met with the neighborhood group last week to keep them up to date, too, because if we don't do that, then people start to speculate, right? So, we want to keep people informed and have them part of the process all along.
Thanks for explaining that. That'll help. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Councilman Hussein.
Hey, we appreciate you guys being here. You guys knew it was coming. We talk about it all the time. So, I'm looking at your, and I love the idea of an additional $75,000 for the facade improvement program, but I am looking at the report, and it looks like from, let's see, 2018 to 2024, we had some, almost $770,000 spent on, again, what I think is incredibly valuable program. And that was kind of dispersed or allocated over 75 different projects, which is fantastic. My concern is that, let's see, it looks like about 56 of those were in awards one and four, and only about 19 is second and third. And to make matters worse, if we look at the facade improvement program, 2023 to 2024, the second and third award each had one project funded, whereas the first and fourth had 10. So, if you could talk to me about what have been the historic challenges in South Lansing? What are you guys doing to market? I know you guys are an innovative bunch. What are we going to do? Because I know we are not an excuse group, right? We come up with innovation and ways around problems. So, what are we going to do to make sure that some of our South Lansing businesses, which really, again, when we talk about some of the infrastructure in place to support, we've talked about this over and over and over, but that actually existed in that first and fourth award, I'm thinking as an example, Real Town Commercial Association, the Old Town Commercial Association. So, there, and I know, you know, we're starting to onboard some of that in South Lansing as an example of the South MLK, CIA, and maybe SWAG to a lesser degree, but what are some things that we're doing to make sure that we're getting the work out and supported?
Yeah, absolutely. And I know that we've talked about some of this, greater outreach. We deployed some of that this year, having, you know, office hours to help folks if they have any difficulty completing the application. We've also been in discussions with the Corridor Improvement Authority boards, and this would be hopefully deployed along all of them, but if they're able to support any of the match. We, you know, have discussed looking at the match requirement. You know, I think it's still very important that folks, you know, put their own dollars in. It helps extend those dollars out, too, to have more projects throughout the city. But if, you know, for example, on South MLK, if the Corridor Improvement Authority could help support some of that match, that might be beneficial or help get more projects done or larger projects done. So, it's really a variety of things, but it does ultimately boil down to the number of applications. I can tell you, like, the ones that have been submitted in South Lansing, they probably have a higher probability of actually being awarded. It's just we haven't seen as many applications from the south side.
So, with some of the efforts maybe that were in hand this year, new efforts in general, did we see, because the application deadline obviously has passed, did we see more applications? Speaker.
You know, I think it's been roughly the same, but continuing to do that outreach year-round, I think is going to be important. Again, we had a marketing communications person that came on board in February, and so that's, you know, helping to get that out earlier. And again, doing that year-round, especially if this is approved in the fiscal year 26 budget, really starting that as soon as possible, not necessarily the application itself, but helping people prepare. So, I think that'll be an important part of this as well.
Keith, do we have anything further? I've got a couple of quick questions. When we're looking at, you know, talking about these projects, I see your annual reports in here, I would assume that all of you know long before we do about different developments that are happening around town. You're talking developers, things like that, correct?
I don't know if we know them before you, but yeah, we're aware of before they're, you know, in a public approvals process.
Okay. And about how much of your revenue or operating is city-funded?
Well, that depends. I guess the contract itself, if you're talking about operations, is $300,000. We also have our admin that's received through the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and the Tax and Financing Authority. Now, the calculations on those, because it does share amongst either local taxes or state and local taxes, is a bit different. So, I think it's $40,000 for Brownfield, or not $40,000, 40% roughly, the city mills of all local mills. And so, that equates to, you know, roughly, yeah, 40% of all that is attributed to the City of Lansing, and then 27% is under the TIFA, because that includes state and local that we can capture admin.
So, a portion of your paycheck comes from the City of Lansing?
So, via the contract, we receive the contract dollars to perform certain services. And so, that's, yeah, the $300,000 is the city contract, city general fund contract.
And these questions aren't relevant technically to you. This is going to go to the city attorney, which is, you know, a question is, since we have LEDC here, we have someone that is working for them and running, where we just heard that they get knowledge before, inside information before about projects. They're also getting paid by the city, so could you explain how that's not a conflict of interest?
I know that you've asked this question, and others have asked this question as well. I'm preparing an answer to that. I am not prepared to give that answer right now.
So, does a conflict of interest exist?
It is. As it relates to what specifically?
Of everything that we just listed here, of that individual or any individual from the LEDC running?
That is a very big question that seems very small. There is not, there is not a legal conflict of interest that prevents someone from running based on employment at the LEDC. But that is a very small answer to a very big question, which I intend to answer much more comprehensively, but I am not prepared to answer that right now.
So, no?
I can only, I can only give you the answer that I have just given you, that there is nothing about employment at Lansing Economic Development Corporation that would prevent a person from legally running for an office. Does that make sense? I mean, I can give you that answer.
Okay. So, there's nothing that legally prevents someone from running from office that is getting taxpayer dollars, inside information, is what you're saying to me?
No. You're asking, you're adding additional factors to the overall analysis. I'm going to back up because I'm getting a lot of feedback. There is nothing about employment at the Lansing Economic Development Corporation that would prevent a person from running for office, for any city office legally.
Okay.
I can give you that. I cannot.
It seems like an unfair advantage, but, you know, okay. No further questions, and we will move on. All right. Thank you both for being here today. We are going to move on to LFD. I believe we have Chief Sturdivant here to present to us. When you are settled in, the floor is yours, sir.
Brian Sturdivant here to present the Fire Department's budget going into fiscal year 25, 26. Answer any questions. We'll start with those listed and then any that this listing may generate. The number one question, the difference from our budget, current fiscal year to the proposed budget. We basically had a 3.2% increase over last year with personnel, 12.4% increase with our operating budget, 29.4% increase with our IT budget. We had a decrease of 0.7 from the equipment rental, and then with insurance and bonds, we had an increase of 2.0. So, total operating budget was increased by 10.2%. Our expenditures increased 4.2%. And the current, well, the soon-to-be-approved fiscal year 25 budget includes one new firefighter position, continuation of our annual firefighter medical examinations with cancer screening, and the Lansing Fire Department firefighter cadet program. Any changes in services that the department is responsible for and why? Yeah, we do have a couple. We will be looking to implement our inaugural infant car seat inspection installation program. We're focusing a lot of attention on community risk reduction. We feel that this is a need within our community, just to be able to inspect car seats that are already installed, to make sure they are installed correctly, and to set up by appointment an ability for new parents to come by a specific station with trained members for the inspection and installation process. Also, we are awaiting a decision from the state of Michigan on our ability through the tri-county medical authority to deploy basic life support ambulances. As most of you are aware, 80% of our call volume is EMS-related, 40% to 50% of that 80% is probably at the basic life support level, which is a step-down level from the all paramedic service that we provide right now. So, we're awaiting that protocol change. It has been approved at the tri-county medical authority board. It is now at the state capitol awaiting approval. We are eagerly anticipating this because of this new deployment of basic life support ambulances will give us a lot more flexibility with how we serve and the coverage we provide to our community. Also, when we promote due to contract language and need, we draw from our trained paramedic cadre, but it takes up to two years to refill that pipeline, and so we are tiptoeing very close to that point where we just don't have enough medics based on the need to staff full-time medics across the board. So, we're excited about what the state is looking to do for us. It's a long time coming, and it'll be good for the department and the community. Are there programs we've done in the past that have not been included in this budget? No, there are not. Are there pieces of equipment we need not included in this budget? No, there are not. Are there any rate or fee increases? If so, why? No, there are not. The 3-1-1 impacts, 3-1-1 has been very, very helpful for us, but we, it is still a bit undetermined on the level of those impacts. What we provide the community is so technically driven, 3-1-1 may be able to answer a call, but more often than not, they will have to filter that call back into the fire department for the level of technical expertise that would be needed to fully answer the inquiry or point community members in the right direction. So, they have had and have been a very positive impact, but we still engage quite a bit based on the technical nature of what we do. Are there any contracting of positions in the budget? If so, provide specifics? No, there are not for fiscal year 25, 26. How many employees have left the department? We've had 19 leave. 10 were due to retirement. So, 10 of the 19 retired out. What if any operational changes were made to become more efficient in our department? What are the savings? The big change will be the ability to deploy the basic life support ambulances. Right now, that has not been approved, so we are standing at the ready to go live. When the approval goes down, that will trigger the beginning of the data collection. We'll be able to, 90 days in, to be able to take a look at the data, track the data to recognize how it is positively impacting our organization and the community from a dollar standpoint. So, we're again excited about that. The community risk reduction efforts with the car seat inspection installation program is a huge operational change, but it will not generate any revenue. And as far as the 40 hours of training for our members to become car seat technicians through Inglewood County 911, we just picked that cost up because we are definitely interested and focused on professional development and education and training for our members. Were we able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Yes. Are there any new initiatives or services? Yes, as spoken, the car seat inspection installation program and the basic life support EMS transport. Who are the top two largest vendors from our department? And when were they last bid? Stryker Corporation is the largest vendor. This contract was the last bid in 2020. It's a 10-year contract for EMS equipment, durable goods, things of that nature. And the next largest vendor would be BioCare LLC. They provide our annual physical examinations with the cancer screens for our members. Have we budgeted for the receipt of any federal grant funds? And if the funds were to get pulled back, would we be able to continue? We have not budgeted any funding for the receipt of grants. We typically don't. A lot of times, our grant come with a zero match, and if there is a bit of a match, we try to conduct some due diligence by just identifying internally where we can borrow from Peter to pay Paul to award and accept the grant. So, we typically will not come hat in hand for grants. That does not mean we don't actively seek out and search, but philosophically, I like to reflect to the mayor's office, to the budget office, that the fire department is willing to have what I coin skin in the game. So, we will always look internally to come up with some price points, some costs to show that we are serious about being good stewards of public funds. And question number 14, what impact has the new BSNA had on our department? It's been a bit impactful. We've got a number of pay codes that are driven by contract language. They weren't necessarily front-loaded into the system. We've had a bit of offset with ensuring that all of those pay codes are in the system, that our payroll personnel have some redundancy in the system. One thing that is encouraging, whenever we reached out to BSNA, they've been very timely. They've been very responsive, and they've been more than willing to bend over backwards to assist. So, we're still learning, I think, as a lot of the city is doing with the new system. It is working. I've utilized it in other organizations, and we will continue to be patient as we get the system loaded based on Lansing Fire Department contract and other supplementals that we have to ensure from a payroll standpoint. And those are the questions, and I'm willing to answer any that may have been generated or any that you have.
I'm going to open the floor first to the internal auditor.
Thank you, President Cost. Thank you very much, Chief Sturdivant. Very good presentation. I had a couple of questions. One of them deals with, there's a line item called overtime salaries, 2024.
Charles, is your microphone on?
Yeah, it's on. How's that? Better?
Better. Thank you.
Yep. I'm sorry, there's a line item called overtime salaries in 2024. It was around 2.5 million. For the new budget, it's around 665,000. That's quite a drop in overtime. Is that something due to hiring to take up that overtime or?
There are a combination of factors that impact what that looks like. Yes, being fully staffed and hiring has a huge impact in that regard. However, it typically will take anywhere from three to six months before we have a candidate that's able to actually have a fire station assignment. So therein lies somewhat of an issue with, we do have contract language that speaks to minimum staffing for our apparatus and our ambulances. And so there is typically a rotation where we will offer overtime until we get folks up to speed with the required and requisite level of training so that they can actually function. So there are a combination of things that impact that.
Thank you, chief. Also, there's down at the bottom, it's called fire ambulance services and there's also training and equipment together in a little group there. It's around 440,000. Is that related to the life support ambulances?
It is. It is pretty costly to outfit an ambulance at the paramedic level, advanced life support level. That's another rationale on why we're very excited with the basic life support direction that the state is going to provide for us because it will cost less to outfit. There will be a decreased level of salary for those members that ride on those particular units. We do have the 10-year contract with Stryker that provides a lot of our durable goods from an emergency medical standpoint. But we go through tons and tons, as you can imagine, of pharmaceuticals, IV fluids, drugs, bandages, four-by-fours, things of that nature and that contributes to that cost.
Thank you, chief. That's all I have, President Cost.
I've got Councilman Garza.
All right, thank you, Vice President, or President Cost. Chief Sturtevant, thanks for being here this evening. Appreciate all you guys do in your department. I've got a few questions here. One, it says the adopted budget for fiscal '23, '24 and what was spent for that same year is roughly about $650,000 left on the table. Was there, did you guys not spend that? What happened with that money?
No, basically, we had some overages and we, again, have attempted to reconcile as best we can before we get to the end of the fiscal year where everything is shut down so that anything in the budget can be turned from red to black. We are very vigilant with our spending, frugal, if you will. But we don't typically withhold what's been approved. We rolled out quite a few programs previously that were unfunded, meaning that they weren't identified from a budgetary standpoint, but we were able to move forward with them anywhere, anyway, excuse me. So what we're able to return to the city, we feel pretty confident that we have been very, very robust with the programs, processes that we've rolled out. But we've also maintained a good stewardship of the public funds.
Okay, so you did return that money to the city?
Yes, yes, we did.
Now, I think I may have asked you this last time, but there's real concern about having shared services or I should say one-way shared services to DeWitt. Are we still doing that?
We are. I had a very interesting conversation at last month's Metro Fire Chiefs Group. As you may be aware, DeWitt, they built a brand-new firehouse but did not add the operation cost for the rigs and the personnel. So we find ourselves in that community more often than not. We have developed a plan through the Metro Fire Chiefs Group where we will be looking as a collective to get in front of the board of supervisors there in DeWitt to share our concerns because all of us are kind of sharing what that looks like by providing DeWitt basically free EMS services. And yeah, it's been a problem for a number of years. It continues. And the DeWitt Fire Chief is part of our Metro Chiefs Group. He chimes in at the meetings when we express this concern. We've decided as a group, again, that we will just get together, craft a letter, present that to the board of supervisor, give him an opportunity to respond to our letter and then look to identify a date where we can show up en masse to share our concerns in front of their board.
Yeah, hopefully that gets rectified sooner than later. Hey, for ambulance to be out there or fire truck to be out there, we need something in South Lansing.
Yeah, exactly. And I think there may be some false sense of added security because when the state provides the approval for the basic life support ambulances, we're looking to add at least two to our system. So we would go from five full-time paramedic-level ambulances to seven with two of those seven being basic life support. And I'm, just between you and I, am starting to get a bit of a feel that DeWitt is rubbing their hands and cannot wait for that to take place so that, yeah, they can continue to lean into the system as they've had. We've provided counteroffers to them, contract services, just a number of initiatives that I'm not even convinced that they have been presented. I know we've presented them to the Fire Chief representative, but not quite sure what he may have done with it once he got back in front of his board. So it is an ongoing issue that we're looking to get our arms around. It's happening to, to a certain extent, in some other areas of the metro also. Lansing is the big brother and they all tend to lean into us whenever and however. And yeah, we've got to get a handle on it.
Okay, well, yeah.
Just a quick follow-up. Explain, explain to folks that might not understand, what requires us to provide those one-way services? I mean, because as long as I've been sitting here, right, we've been hearing the same thing, rubbing their hands. And frankly, if we go through your budget and we go through your department, we simply are not able to provide the services to our citizens at the level that they deserve. Frankly, we're not able to, even with our staffing levels, and we'll talk a little bit more about that after Mr. Garza's done. But we're not able to retain our firefighters to make sure that our individuals in our department, that they're not overworked, right? That they're not, I mean, we can go on and on. So what requires us to provide those services?
That's actually a great question. There is nothing that requires the one-way service. It's all crafted as a mutual aid agreement. But what I've found since I've been on board is mutual aid is not so mutual. Again, Lansing was a nine-firehouse department with over 200 members. The surrounding area, one or two fire stations with 20 or 30 members. And so they have all leaned into us for a number of reasons and a number of services. So under the guise of the mutual aid agreements and contracts, that is how this has been taking place. And, you know, to be quite frank, it's become a bit of a culture. I've had and made some proposals on updating the mutual aid agreements because I'm being held accountable to agreements that have a signature chain that goes back to the late 80s. And the folks that signed at those times are probably not even with the organization or may not even be with us here on this earth. But they're still contractually bound and there does not seem to be a whole lot of interest with crafting, re-crafting, updating. It's a lot of work for OCA and his staff at every level of municipal government within the metro area to re-craft those agreements. And so it's been business as usual. You may be aware, a few years ago, there was some talk about a metro area department where we all combine our resources and just serve the metro area. That did not gain any steam. I think there were some egos and personalities that played into it because that means we don't need seven or eight fire chiefs. We only need one or two and who's going to step down? So there was a lot of personality dynamic that fed into that also.
I've got, oh, do you?
Yeah, I still have a couple.
Okay, sorry.
All right, I'll be quick. So I appreciate you mentioning that currently we have five ambulances out there. You're looking at increasing two more to a total of seven. When does that go into effect?
Well, we're waiting for the approval from the state. And as soon as that approval comes down, we're ready to go live. One of the challenges right now is you are all aware that we tore down Station 2 and the new Station 2 is under construction on that same footprint. We moved Engine 2 on Grand River to Station 8, which is on Marshall. So we've got both of those engines running out of that one station. However, the EMS calls in Station 2's district actually respond from Station 1 because of the limitations of that older station. It was only one bay. It was not a drive-through. So there was nowhere to adequately place or deploy an additional ambulance. So we're working through some dynamics such as that. From what I've been told in my contact with River Caddis and the public safety vendor that's doing the construction, we could theoretically be moving into new Station 2 by Thanksgiving of this year. So they seem to be working pretty diligently on the construction there and at the public safety campus on South Washington. So it will be a timing issue. But right now, we're just waiting for the state to give us the two thumbs up. We've got the equipment. We've got the reserve ambulances that are ready. We have the trained personnel. It's just a matter of fine-tuning that deployment plan, timing that with when we can move back into Station 2 and then begin the deployment at that point.
So, okay, so I appreciate that. I'm concerned about the staffing because it looks like since the 2011, that GIS study from 2017 to 2019, that we're down 21% reduction in staffing. And with East Lansing, our neighboring community, doing just over 7,000 run calls last year, they have three ambulances. So the math I'm looking at, we're about four times that amount of run calls. Seems like we should have roughly 12 ambulances.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. I've shared my concerns with the trajectory because we have reduced our resources, but the call volume continues to explode.
And with this new vision coming, there's a 500-plus percent.
Exactly. I've had some conversations, albeit briefly, with OCA on impact fees. I know when I worked on the West Coast, impact fees were huge. A developer would come in and part of his project would be to build a new station, buy a couple of fire trucks because you're going to have an impact on public safety. Not so much here in Michigan. So we're looking to be as creative as we can be and just think outside the box. You bring up a good point about the retention of our personnel. We are a high-volume, very complex EMS system and it's not for everyone. And so we're seeing some impacts with some of our folks. This is not quite what I thought it was. They want to move over to a slower department that runs less calls. So we deal with a lot of those variables on a regular.
Thank you. I'm done right now.
All right, I've got Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Cost. Thank you for being here. Good to see you and thank you for your leadership in the department. Definitely see a lot of significant changes. Relating to the questions to the mutual service with DeWitt, do you have an estimated cost that it's costing annual?
I don't right now, but I can get that, the cost from Lansing. Our computer-aided dispatch center through Inglewood County 911, they keep very detailed records. So we could go back and take a 36-month snapshot or maybe even a 60-month snapshot. How many times were our units in Clinton County? What was the resolution of some of those calls? And what were the impacts as it relates to a price point? I can get that information for you.
That would be wonderful, yeah, because that was my question, with number of service calls and things like that as well. Additionally, on the last hearings, I was asking a few different departments about the increase in IT allocations. I don't know if you're able to answer yours, about 29%, 300,000. Is that some technology updates or would that be a question for Jake?
That may be a question for Jake, but we look to leverage technology any way we can. Due to our staffing numbers being where they are and not really commiserate with the call volume or the community demand, if we can substitute some technology to help bridge that gap, we're all for it. We have a technology center, if you will, in each of the apparatus. The cost of some of our programs have gone up from a technological standpoint. I don't know, Jake, if you have some more detailed information.
Thank you, chief.
Overall, about $20,000 of that cost is due to increase in direct charges to the department. The rest is allocating the overall costs of the IT department as a whole.
Okay, so we spoke at the last meeting about trying to understand where those additional costs are coming from, from each department when they're up here indicating that IT allocation increase. So that would, I guess, be just the same question.
Yeah, so overall, there's about 147,000 in direct costs for the fire department. The remainder of the amount of about 1.3 million is allocated between about 140 computer devices and 193 employees.
So if, when you have the opportunity, if you could just provide why each department has such a significant increase in IT allocation expenditure? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Councilman Hussein.
So you spoke a little bit, Chief Sturtevant, about overtime and, you know, some reduction. And obviously, there was a question from our internal auditor. Have there been any internal policy changes that would impact the amount of overtime that you're paying out?
There have been some proposals. We've met and continue to meet regularly with our labor organization. I conduct a labor management meeting on a monthly basis. A lot of what drives that is contract language. So it would involve some MOU development. Some of it has been based in part to the fact that previously it would, could take up to five to six months from application submitted to getting a final job offer. So we work with HR to decrease that timeline. So there have been multiple impacts on what that looks like. Again, we look to be as lean and as mean as we possibly can. We do have a system in place where, you know, I'm proud to say that the dispersment of overtime is more equalized now. So everyone gets a fair shot at it. But it is a, we don't want to think about it as the price of doing business, but we've had some long-term military leaves. We had some long-term injury leaves that we typically have to backfill with overtime on top of just maintaining the minimum staffing per contract language on all of the rigs. So there are a number of moving parts that have an impact to that.
Okay. There's nobody, though, within your department, is what you're saying, there's nobody that is performing overtime work and not being paid for that? Even if, even if that means picking up?
Not at all. We just recently crafted, well, it hasn't been recently, it was last year. Wow, time is flying. Where we crafted an MOU where our members now have an option to accrue comp time for the overtime work. And a lot of them have done that. But at some point in time, when they utilize the comp time, of course, we'll have to pay overtime for the backfill. So it's, yeah, it's a bit of a challenge at times.
Just to be clear, I think there was a second part to that question, which was, if an employee picks up a phone, do they get paid for that?
Well, that's an interesting question, very timely. We do have two divisions that have a rotational callback. Our Fire Marshal's Office and our Logistics Division. Logistics, again, snowplows and keeping things up and running, we get it there. Staff there on a rotation. Same for our Fire Marshal's Office. And right now, there is some language that if they answer a phone, there is some overtime involved if they are the on-call rotational investigator. We have a metro area rotational arson investigator process where by rotation, each of the fire departments in the metro area will stand up a investigator to serve the entire area overnight or during the course of a weekend. And so there are two components with what that looks like. If I pick up the phone, answer a call, provide some consultation, yes. If I have to research code, provide some consultation, yes. And then there's the actual response. If I have to jump in my vehicle, respond into a community to provide either investigation or inspection services, yes, there is overtime available for that.
Okay, so now I have an additional question. So almost sounded as if there might be a situation, or maybe there have been situations, where people in those two divisions actually do pick up their phone, maybe execute some measure of work, but they are not paid.
Uh, no, we have contract language that drives this, so we do have to compensate. And this is less of an issue in our logistics division and more of an issue with the technical level of expertise in the Fire Marshal's Office. But if they pick up that phone, based on contract language as it states today, they will be compensated. And another component of that is if they respond based on a need, complex incident, a fire watch needing to be enforced, they actually will get compensated. they actually will get compensated for that also.
Okay, just a couple more things, if that's okay. And I'm hoping you, and I'm hoping, obviously, the mayor's office and, you know, obviously, our budget director are having these conversations. But there is a strategic plan in place, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
2024, 2029, so it's a five-year strategic plan. And everything about that, when you talk about putting the first thing first, it is about staffing. And so it says in both the strategic, sorry, strategic plan vision and strategic plan goal, appropriate staffing levels are identified as like one of the top priorities.
Yes.
When you actually engage the public with regard to priorities that should be embedded in there, things that the department should be working toward. Number one, as a matter of fact, the community concern was staffing.
Yes.
And part of that is because although, you know, some people would say it's frugal, I say it's dangerous. I think we're at a dangerous level. And some of that was out of necessity, but I'm really hoping, I mean, when you look at 2011, we had, what, some 52 firefighters per day? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Now we have about 41.
Forty-one.
Yet we've had a 60% increase in call volume since that time, right? That is, that is, we are at a dangerously low staffing level right now. And so I'm hoping that we are, when we go through these planning processes and we come up with these, these plans, that we are earnest in our efforts to actually execute some of these things. So I guess, what is the conversation between your department, the mayor's office, our budget director, et cetera? How are we going to build back over the next? Because it says in these plans even that these, the hope is that these goals and objectives are met by 2029.
Yeah.
Which means we got to get moving. We're not going to, we're not going to do that at one staffing, you know, one F T E per year.
Yes.
So what's the plan over the next four years?
Well, a great question. Thank you for asking. I know our request for increased staffing is measured against a number of competing interests within the city.
Can I stop you real quick?
Yeah.
Let me stop you real quick, though. And the mayor's office knows this, I think the city council knows this. There is nothing, when you talk about a city, there is nothing more important, period, than public safety, public services, and then economic development, right? And, and so, and I get that, but I also know that there's competing interests coming from departments that, at the end of the day, should not be prioritized at the same level, period. So, but go ahead.
Yeah, yes, great point, great point, appreciate that. Basically, what we're doing internally, we are looking to become more data-driven with the decisions that we make and we need and we want, and it's my desire for the data to create the narrative that we continue to share. I think part of the challenge that I've had is over the years, here in our community, we've told a lot of our story with the emotion and the opinions of the professionals, but there was nothing really data-driven. That was one of the initiatives we're driving toward the strategic plan. What we have in place now is a community risk assessment that we will be conducting through the Center for Public Safety Excellence that will help us identify the risk, low, moderate, high, in our community and what the service level objective would be to address those risks. So between developing documentation like that, using information and data from our CAD system, continuing to have the conversations, because you're absolutely right, this was identified early in my tenure, that we, yeah, we need to get in front of this. My concern is yours, the trajectory. Call volume is going through the roof, resources have remained flat or have been cut and not restored. So we want to take a measured approach, the balanced approach. We also want to be considerate of other city partners that we're working with. I share your concern, Councilman, with prioritizing. But again, that's through the mayor and his staff and with some insight from you all on what that looks like. And we'll continue to do the best we can to service the city with what we have until we can really recognize those baby steps to, to restore the services that will meet the demands of the community. Because right now, it is a, it is a bit of a challenge.
Yeah, and I appreciate the answer. I also, you know, and we have to be very, very, I think, candid, right? In terms of the cost for service and the fact that they are only going to increase. You talked a lot about, you know, other entities in the area kind of leaning on the fire department, City of Lansing in general, kind of in a disproportionate way. They also really lean on us in terms of taking care of really the top two demographics that result in cost for service. And that would be the regions aged as well as the regions poor. And so we are, we're trying to meet that need, but we're having a real hard time, right? Meeting that need, I must be honest. And so I would like to see, as an example, let's figure out, and we look at some of those service agreements, how they're a little bit more equitable and fair. I'm not, you said a few times, we're really excited about the basic life support ambulances. I don't know that I should, I'm a little nervous about that, right? When you look at, and I think Councilman Garza spoke to it pretty eloquently, but, I mean, we're looking at five ambulances for 26,933 calls. That's one for every 5,386 calls. Whereas you look at East Lansing, they have about one for every 2,464 calls.
Yeah.
And then you have Delhi that has one for every 2,034 calls. So even with your basic life support ambulances, which I've read a lot, right, about those as opposed to the advanced life, some, some departments have certainly struggled. They haven't necessarily delivered the way they thought they would deliver.
Yeah.
And we also know that the nature of, of calls, you said some 30, 40%, you know, might not be, or maybe it's a higher number.
Yeah.
Might not necessarily, necessarily need that advanced life support ambulance. But the, the nature of those calls change, right, on an annual basis. And so at the end of the day, we need, we need more ambulances, but we also need more bodies on those ambulances, and we need more rigs out the door, we know that.
Yeah.
So we'll continue, we'll continue to obviously talk about that. I think it's critical that we do. I wanted to, real quick, because we are also looking at funding the cadet program and getting $150,000. You talked to us a little bit about first year, we know the graduation's coming up May 2nd.
Yes.
How did it go? What didn't go so well? What are maybe some changes coming down the pipe to make sure that it's even better next year?
Yeah, our cadet program was a resounding success. We were able to accomplish a lot. We actually were able to transition five cadets into the program. We just recently hired one of those cadets as a full-time F T E for the fire department. We actually received 26 applications. There were some withdrawals, there were some that didn't meet the minimum qualifications. And with that demographic and age group, there were actually some no-shows, but we were able to power through. Now, from my perspective, the rationale on the cadet program was because we wanted to tangibly recognize a more of a broad demographic that could be impacted into the fire department. We did not necessarily see that. But again, the students that we were able to engage are very bright. We're going to keep them on the hook for as long as we can with the training that we provided. Right now, one of our checkpoints is that we recently were awarded and accepted a SAFER grant, 4.3 million from the federal government. What we had to do to qualify for that grant was to outline over 36 months the rate of attrition. And so it kind of decreased the ability for vacancies that we could utilize with our cadet program because of the grant. And so that's one of the things that we're working through right now. We do still have some connectivity with what that looks like. We've recently increased the level of M O U language with the Lansing School District. So the Hill Fire Science Academy will become a pipeline into our cadet program, and our cadet program will be the pipeline into our organization. So we've got the pieces in place, we're just trying to get them aligned. But I could not be prouder of our staff with the ability to put together the L F D cadet program as an inaugural program. Thank you to all of you that provided the support and approval for that to happen, and, and we will continue to work with that as a process.
Okay, yeah, I just think, you know, we need to continue to obviously enhance the program.
Yes.
Work with the Lansing School District. I think we have the potential for one of the strongest pipelines in the entire state.
Yes.
But I think some things, you know, still have to be worked out. As an example, you, so the graduation is May 2nd. When does the next cadet program, do you know roughly when it starts?
The next cadet program school gets out, we're thinking sometime midsummer, late summer. But again, what I.
So the kids that come through Lansing Tech then?
Yes.
And they're done with their two years?
Yes.
And they, you know, for whatever reason, weren't able to get their Fire One, Fire Two, weren't able to get their EMS. What you're saying is that they could then go into the cadet program. Is there anything that keeps, is there anything that keeps them, a Lansing Tech kid, from also being involved in the cadet program?
No, no, not at all. But again, my concern is the timing of our acceptance of the SAFER grant. Because it decreased the diameter of the pipeline, for lack of a better term. But the process in the program works and it, the pieces are in place. If it were not for the acceptance of the SAFER grant, we would have 15 to 20 vacancies. These folks graduate from the cadet program in a couple of weeks, timing it with our H R processes, and we could get them directly into the pipeline. But right now, we have to take a more measured, calculated approach with what that looks like because we did accept that SAFER grant.
Okay, how many, just real quick, I'm just curious, how many Lansing kids do we, you said five or six are going to graduate? How many, second, how many of those are Lansing kids?
Uh, none of them are.
None?
None of them are. The five that we actually went with end up being East Lansing, Blended Learning Academy, there was a young man from Farmington High School, Michigan International Prep, Grand Ledge, Holt, and Mason.
We think that's a symptom of what? That's a little concerning to me.
It's interesting, Councilman, because we're seeing some of the same and/or similar numbers when it comes to the success rate on our entry-level written exam. And I think what it does for me, it indicates to me that we have to be more intentional and purposeful for the Lansing School District students that are interested in the fire service to have a program so that we can tutor them and remediate them along the way to help them be successful. This is not an indictment against the school district or our students, but we've seen these similar numbers as it relates to Lansing residents that we want some level of preference, be it two or three points. Your mom, a dad, solid taxpayers, you been a kid keeping your nose clean? We want, that's who we, but then we find, oh, wow, didn't pass the written exam. I need to do something about that, and, and that is on the radar. We're going to look to do something above and beyond the cadet program to help prepare them to be successful for all of the hiring processes that they have to check off before they get that final job offer.
All right, do we have any further questions for the chief? Seeing none, we want to thank you for coming down here tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, and next we will have Parks and Rec. Brett is here to present his classic red shirt.
You want me to start with the questions?
Yes, sir.
All right. So what is the difference with your budget from the current fiscal year to the proposed budget? We do have new fees, and we'll also need to go over the C I P from the millage, which I'll do in a later question here. So those are the two differences there, changes. Are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? No changes. Are there programs you have done in the past that you have not included in this budget? Nothing substantial there, you know, we do have classes and programs that change every year with our instructors, but no changes there. So rate increases and fee increases, and if so, why? I'll have you turn to page E 21 of your budget, which is, should be the parks' new fees. And I can go through those. We have some for parks, basically regarding River Trail, or excuse me, Showmobile Rental, the River Walk as well, or the River Trail, and Adado Riverfront Park there. We do have some increases in our sports programs that you'll see there with the youth sports and then some of the camps as well. Speaking of camps, our summer playground program, our Kids Camp, we are making increases there that you'll see along with swim lessons and fees for swimming as well as athletic fields and rentals for athletic field tournaments there. So those are some of the new fees that you will see there in the general fund. Next question is, are there any rate increases from the current budget that have not been implemented yet? And if so, why? No, those have all been implemented every year, July 1, those go into effect with our fees that are approved by council. Any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? No, all of our equipment would go through the garage, and so anything with that would be through public service as well there. What impact has 311 taken on your department and staff? 311 calls just started to go there as far as our main Parks and Recreation line. So we are right now in the process of literally a few weeks where that has been taking place. So I have nothing for you as, as far as workload that it has taken off or impacts really to the budget as far as that goes. Are there any eliminated combining of or contracted positions in your budget? Nothing new, and I know you'll ask a follow-up question here on that, but there are no new contracting positions in there. How many employees have left your department in the past year? That is six. How many were due to retirement? That would be three. What, if any, operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department? And what were the cost savings? We continue to obviously explore with Lansing Connect or with the online registration and any of those things that we post on our website, et cetera, to become more efficient and more able to be able to serve the residents where they are able to grab this information, whether it be signing up for trees that they want to be planted in front of their house, et cetera. So all of these things, we try and push as much as we can online, and then includes feeding that information also out on our social media networks. So those would be our things that we're doing to make ourselves more efficient out there. Are we able to perform all the necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Yes. Are there new initiatives or services your department will be providing this year? So this is when we're going to talk about capital improvement projects coming up for this year. So typically, we have done the Kids Camp program along with, this is again where we have our subsidies for golf and cemeteries that come off the top. So this year, we're projecting 15,000 in golf and then 785 in cemeteries. Our park board is adding money into the park board grants program. This is similar to what is being run through the neighborhoods and citizen engagement. So really matching with that, we have seen some of those already, and we'd like to see more of those from more communities throughout. So we kind of pattern that after the neighborhoods and citizen engagement time. But really, folks can come to us at any time with what they have for their local green space in their area, their local park. Many of the groups are named after their parks. So any one of those communities that have ideas to bring those forth, we're adding money in for that. There's some citywide maintenance that's going in at Turner Dodge, Guyer, Fenner, in terms of some decks and steps there. We have some tennis court improvements that will be taking place out there as well as some basketball court improvements on the south end. The Rutter Park Fountain, we're adding money into that. So we had $100,000 last year, we're adding in another half a million this year. We are putting that out for bid as far as engineering and design services. We had an estimate done back in 2015 of $420,000. So you take that, 2015, and put it into 2025, 2026 numbers, where are we going to land? We think you might as well double it, you're going to be around the 700. We think 600 is short right now. So we're looking to do, see what that price is and then do some fundraising or look at other ways to fulfill, to be able to come up with what the price is for the Rutter Park Fountain. And then we have some money in there as well for some, uh, fixes at Hunter Park Pool, which will be in the citywide repair and maintenance there. So those are capital improvement projects for this year. Then what are the top two largest vendors for your department and when were they last bid? Lansing School District and United would be our biggest. Lansing School District for rental of facilities, specifically the South Side Community Center. And then United, um, they are up every year, meaning do we renew them again? In terms of when it would go out for bid, that would be after the 2026 season. Have you budgeted for receipt of federal grant funds? If you have, and the federal funds get pulled back, will you still be able to continue the service for those funds? What they would be used for or purchase the item intended to purchase with federal grant funds or cover the staff? Basically, we do not have, um, federal grant funds that we are depending on for a program or service out there. Do we have things in that can be capital improvements that if we do not get it, we take a look at doing that project within our millage, et cetera? Yes. But there is nothing that would be a make or break with the federal funds as far as staffing or as far as a capital improvement. And then what impact has the new BSNA had on your department, and what issues have you run into? Have your employees had issues with BSNA payroll? Yes, um, but we continue to grow on that. As far as when there are issues, we put IT tickets in. If it is that, BSNA has been very responsive to our staff as far as questions that we have had on them with changes in the system. A little bit different, unique for our department is we have temporary employees that come in for summertime or for sports leagues, et cetera. So it's just working through that because they don't actually enter in their time. And then our payroll person goes in, manually enters that, and then gets approval by the supervisors. So all things we're working through, um, but other than that, I think we have worked many of the kinks out again with our IT department or with the BSNA staff directly. So that is all that I have pending any questions that you had.
Okay, I'm going to open the floor up to questions. Does anyone have questions? Councilman Spadafor.
Brett, where are you in hiring your seasonal staff right now?
So we are, um, right now in the process of hiring for our summer camp program. That is huge for us. Um, we are, we are always looking for folks as far as seasonals for the parks. Our main influx of those came in the first week in April, April 7th. But I believe there's still maybe some vacancies within the seasonal staff that we could use as well in the parks. Our big push right now is for our summer camps, and that also includes our lifeguarding staff. Lifeguards seem to be doing really well this year. We will be able to staff Hunter Park Pool fully, and that is good. Knowing that, we're expecting Morse Park to come on next year. So it is good that we have this now because we're going to need them for sure next year. And it also allows us to do some other things with our swim lessons in the summertime that we traditionally have not had because all of our lifeguards, et cetera, are out at the pools. But yeah, all of our jobs are posted, um, online. I will add for those summer camp positions, you know, there are several, um, steps that are going to be taken in the minimum wage. We have gone to the highest step, and that is done purposefully so that we don't always have to make that change, number one, but also to tell folks out there, hey, these jobs of taking care of these kids, whether that be at the pools or at the camps, is very important to us. And so, uh, we have gone to that highest level, and hopefully, we will see that. And because obviously, if we don't have our seasonal staff at these programs, we're turning kids away. And so that's huge for us. So those are the positions that we have opened along with. We have two programming positions, um, and some full-time positions that are out there as well.
And then you mentioned it, Morse Park is coming online next summer?
That's correct. Construction's going on right now, um, and yeah, we plan on having that open, um, come next June, we'll be ready to go.
Great, thanks.
Okay, I've got the internal auditor and then Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, President Cost. Thank you, Brett, for being here. You kind of answered my one question regarding the part-time seasonal folks. Just wanted to verify that all of the labor changes that the state put in has been taken into account here, because I know they probably affected their rates a little bit more than your regular salary, folks.
You talking with the sick time pay?
Sick time, yeah.
Yes, we have, uh, we have a system in place for that as far as counting those hours. Some of that is, is obviously worked out with the union contract, and I believe already above the standard there. But for our summer staff, et cetera, yes, we, uh, we have a process for that in place.
Thank you. There's a line called city equipment rental. Is that related to the garage you were talking about, the cost? Okay.
Yeah, so that, that basically is our, our parks rental that gets charged back to the garage.
And what?
And then it also, I'm sorry, it also could be when we do not have equipment or that we use it in such an infrequent state that we, it's better for us to rent that. We do have equipment rental that we go out for renting certain pieces of equipment that we just don't put that many hours on.
Okay, thank you. And then the last one, the cemetery fund, I hate to ask it, but it keeps going up and up, and it's up to what, 1.3 million? I was wondering, you know, what that covers from a few years ago?
Well, we got a couple of things. Number one, we made some adjustments a few years ago with, um, the labor that we had out there and increased, um, the levels of those positions out there. But the biggest thing is, um, there are more and more cremations taking place, and there are less and less full burials, and that trend will continue. And, um, so it's a matter of, you know, having our fees to, to cover those costs. It will never be. We just will not be a for-profit cemetery. So we will always have a subsidy there. Working to keep that as low as we can, that's our goal.
Great, thank you, Brett.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. This is a little bit small compared to the whole thing, but Hunter Park Pool, um, three things since we have, it sounds like some staff. One, can we not close it from four to five o'clock? It's such a burden for a lot of people because it's like right prime time of either getting there or, you know, it's just like that time is the perfect time to be at the pool, and it closes for an hour. Two is that there's always a really long line, like really long, that takes 20 minutes plus to get up there because the people are not really familiar. They're looking everybody up, signing people in, um, and it's really slow, so maybe a staff person could be up there. And three, a lot of kids get turned away, especially, um, some of the refugee kids because it requires like an ID. You know, we have young kids coming up here, maybe like a seven, eight-year-old coming with their 16-year-old sibling, and they're required to have all these very specifics. Sometimes they try to work, and they do a school ID sometimes, but I usually don't even have my ID. I got to remember to luckily go to my car. So with the staff and the budget, if we could work on those things, I think it would improve our Hunter Park experience.
Yeah, we can take a look at that. All of those things have safety components to them. But yeah, we can definitely take a look. No promises, bring your ID. But yeah, we all, all of those things have some safety components to them.
Councilman Hussein.
Just real quick, do you know ballpark what we pay, um, United to mow all park properties?
I can get that for you. As far as parks and cemeteries, yes. It's all combined into one.
Please do. Um, the other piece is, and I'm hoping the answer is not, we took those provisions out. We were struggling with United, um, over the past couple of years, particularly as it pertain to playground surfaces that was at one point in their contract. I know, uh, as recently as 2000, I think, I think last year, actually, or the last contract. Um, and then the other piece was, um, you know, they, in terms of litter pickup and things like that, a lot of times what they were doing was just kind of mowing over it, um, creating, you know, confetti in the parks and things like that. I believe you're the contract administrator. What have we done to take, to address that?
So anytime we have that situation, it's obviously something that would, that we discuss. It's a similar situation when we have, uh, issues with, um, our own employees that maybe did not do, um, the job to the standard that we needed. So this is discussed with United on that. If there's situations where they need to go back out and re-mow, et cetera, we do that. When you're talking about the playgrounds, are you talking about weeds on the playgrounds?
Playground surfaces.
Surface weeds? So we, we have a little over 70 playgrounds. Thirty-five or so of those each year have new mulch brought in, but all of those need to be treated for weeds. And yeah, that is, that is a part of it that they do.
Do you know if we've ever withheld payment? Because that's also a piece of the contract, right? So if these things are not actually provided, we can actually move.
Yeah, there have been situations where payment, uh, has not gone. For instance, if you don't make cuts or if we need to, uh, have situations where it's dry weather, et cetera, um, those are situations where payment doesn't take place for those things if work is not done. If it is situations where work was done but not done to standard, they go back to fix.
And then, um, has there been any conversation about stump grinding or creative way to start that up?
I think we presented to council, and I'll look over here to Mr. Lawrence, but we have presented a, a package on that, um, previously. So within our, um, what we currently have and what our forestry team is able to keep up with, with our current staffing, we have hazardous tree removals, and we're very behind on our tree trimming. To be able to go into or back into that stump grinding, um, it's a situation where, again, when we talk about our seasonal staff and what we're able to bring on, would be very difficult with, uh, our current staffing levels to be able to do that. And then I feel that we would be taking away from some of those hazard tree mitigations or some of that limb trimming that needs to take place, and we're, we're behind on that. Stump grinding itself is not that long of a process, but then removing the millings, bringing dirt in, reseeding, those are all the more timely tasks, I think, behind that as far as just running the stump grinder down the street. But yeah, I, I do know that we put together a package previously, and we can obviously resurrect that with today's costs.
Okay. And then the second thing I had was, um, the greenhouse over at Mount Hope. I noticed that we're growing stuff in there. Any plans to, let, let me clarify, we are growing tropical plants in there. Is there any plans where that could possibly be kind of a, a summer program or winter program with kids?
So I would, I would kind of refer or, or send that to really Allen Neighborhood Center right now. They are staffed to be able to do that, and they have, um, a much more regulated, I guess, greenhouse with that. Do we have a greenhouse? Yes. Does it hold our tropicals in there? Yes. Does it save us a lot of money from ordering new flowers every year? Certainly does. But I would definitely, uh, take a look more at partnering with Allen on that before we would start anything in that greenhouse. One of the two is heated, only one. So the other one is, is not even a heated greenhouse. And we are, with our current levels of plants that we bring in, it's pretty full in there. And again, it's not vegetables, so I think if we would want to do classes on that stuff, it would be more leaning towards Garden Project or, um, Allen Neighborhood Center for really how to grow vegetables inside or indoors during those winter months.
Well, the plants look great. Also, I wanted to compliment you on the condition of the parks. Tierston Walters, who serves on the park board, um, and myself have made it a habit to visit as many, uh, parks as we can, um, and we've gone to a lot of parks, from Holly Park to all of the parks in the First Ward. Our recent adventure to Willoughby Park was excellent. If no one has been out there, it's a, it's a great park if you're just looking for woods and nothing else, literally nothing else. And you will get lost. We did, in fact, get lost. Luckily, we had put little cookie crumbs through there and remembered some bones that we had seen. But I want to thank you because, you know, every park we went to looked great. The equipment looked, looked good. The neighbors were happy. And then Willoughby Park, man, that is a, I think, a fantastic opportunity for some really in-the-nature kind of wood stuff.
Yeah, thank you for that. Just to let council members know, we will be starting mowing up next week in the parks. So, um, we were able to hold off a significant amount of time here. I think usually we're a little bit earlier in April, so we were able to, um, hold off this year on the mowing, but that will start next year, and some of that litter that we have out there, et cetera, um, we'll be able to get out of there. But I appreciate those comments.
Yep. And then I have Councilman Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. I'll be, I'll be brief. Thanks for being here, Brett. Thanks for always taking my calls when I call you. You're definitely one of the most responsive people. How many budgeted vacancies do we have in your department?
How many budgeted vacancies? Well, six. Those, yep.
Just six, okay. Yeah, I heard you say, you know, with your current staffing, are those jobs posted online right now, do you know?
Uh, no, not all of them are online. I take that back. So we had, uh, we had six that departed in the last year. We have already hired two of those positions. So we have four, excuse me, three that are open right now. So we hired three, and we have three more that are vacant. The two programming positions, um, I don't believe out yet, but we are hiring some community center programmers, so look for those soon.
Do we have any vacancies in forestry right now?
Forestry would be, that would be a question for our Public Service Department on that. I mean, the, the amounts are here in the budget, but I don't have any of those staffing areas.
Okay. And then has there ever been talk about bringing the mowing back in-house?
Yeah, we put together a proposal again for council on that, um, and you can see from the numbers, not only with our abilities to bring on that seasonal staff, but also our abilities to maintain. We would have to purchase all new equipment here. We would have to maintain all of that equipment. And I would not make that recommendation to council, and I think you saw that in the numbers that we put together.
All right, thank you.
All right, do we have any further questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you for being here tonight. All right. We are going to go ahead and move on down. For folks that are watching or sitting in the audience, we are still in committee of the whole, and we have one last item on us, which is item six E, Discussion, the Fiscal Year 25-26 Budget Policies. Did everyone have a chance to look through these? And do we have any discussion or questions on these? Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. One of them that is titled Environmental Stewardship, that's been on there for some years. I've brought it a few years back, but, um, I'm still going in on that, meaning that I'm advocating for that to be reflected in the budget. And I've told the mayor this, and I've told a few people, but I'll be trying to seek a full-time employee for the Sustainability Department under Ms. Lori Wells. She's a sustainability manager. She's already came to committee a few times and has identified through question and answer, has identified savings that she's brought to the city, has identified grants. She has identified the need for an additional full-time employee. She, we are aware that there's possibly three employees coming from Bloomberg that does some work related to that, but not the type of work that we need the full-time employee for. So I'm hoping that, um, this year, working with council, that you guys can support me in that. We haven't talked about it because Public Service hasn't been here, and she hasn't been here, but there'll be questions there, and I'm willing to work with anybody else for any priorities that you all have and might want to have an amendment for. So I just want to put that out there. I mean, that's not obviously the only priority, it's just that all the other serious priorities, especially like Fire Department and all that, is covered on council. Like, everybody is pretty much in agreeance that we want public safety, we want services. So I'm trying to work on this one with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn at 7:10. We'll be back in 10.
The Pope Answers. It shows Pope Francis sitting down in conversation with a diverse group of young people, answering questions.